Dr. Campley here. Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Mr. Liggett.
Here.
Mr. McKinney.
Here.
Dr. Sadler.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Dr. Weston.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
1.03, 1.04, pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so 1.05, reading of the PVST mission statement. Mrs. Hurd, would you mind reading the mission statement this evening?
The mission of the Perkyomen Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally.
Thank you so very much. 1.06 is a request to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second? Motion in a second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Against? Motion passes. 1.07, we have a special recognition this evening. Mr. McKinney and Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Ms. White. I'm also going to invite Mr. Ganesh up forward and Mr. Height, who also is the club advisor for esports.
Good evening, everyone. So we're very proud to recognize our high school esports club this evening. In a way, this club is a great example of how we do school differently here at PV. You know, this club offers a great opportunity for the students to learn some of the skills like creative thinking, problem solving, and communication, all while playing competitive video games. So it's a great opportunity for our students. So I have Mr. Height, the club advisor, and our team captain, Josh, to share their experiences.
Somewhere there's a presentation. If not, I have a song and dance prepared for you. Ah, there it is. And if you just click, like, aha, there it is. Okay. So, uh, thank you. And, um, Dr. Russell, thank you. And Mr. Ganesh. So the Perkyomen Valley Esports Team, this is our annual report, okay? And last year, about two years ago now, it says one and a half years ago, but about two years ago, we were here and we were talking about all the things that we had done up to that point and all the things that we still had to complete. And as you can see, that list was pretty extensive. But we are here tonight to tell you that we have done that. And there we go. Okay. This is what the room looked like when things were moving in. And then as we started building it out, there's another slide or another picture. There you go. And those were completed two summers ago, I guess, not this past summer, the summer before. That's our first year of competition. And then we have some tryouts and some seventh graders who would come down to take a look at things. So we've done a whole lot in a year and a half, as you can see. We also have a really nifty neon sign. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ryder, for getting that for us. All right. And then the next slide. So one of the reasons why we wanted to start this, because there's some really unique demographics that esports hits. And first of all, 80% of esports student athletes are first-time participants in any extracurricular activity. Now, I haven't done an informal study of students on our esports team, but I can tell you, just from listening, I'm pretty sure we have a number of students who this is their first extracurricular activity. 20% of our top esports athletes attract scholarships to national colleges. When we first presented to you, we had a student who had gotten a scholarship to Arcadia. This past year, we graduated a student, Jack Santa Suso, who got a scholarship through esports as well. And Josh, Josh has been awarded a scholarship. Whether he takes it or not is up to him. That's his decision. But he has gotten a scholarship as well. So there is money there. One last thing, though, thank you, is that there are other opportunities here. It's not just people playing games. The logo for the team was created by Josh's sister for the team. We also have a number of students who, when we are playing, it's quite clear that they are strategizing, that they are coaching each other, and there are other opportunities through an organization that we are part of. So let's take a look at that. Right. So we are part of the PIEA, Pennsylvania Interscholastic Esports Association. They just partnered with a company called The Esports Company. And they do, they have elevated our participation greatly. One of the cool things that they do now is they stream all of our matches. As you can see in the bottom left-hand side, we trounced Portage area 13 to 0 in Valorant. And that is also cast, they're like professional shoutcasters, they call them, who call the game and say, what a great job we're doing. And it's a lot of fun. And we also have jerseys coming. And those jerseys are produced by the esports company as well. I think, yeah. Now it's over to Josh.
Okay. So to those of you that don't know, I'm Joshua. I'm a senior here. And I'm the club captain. So we'll start off a little bit with Valorant. A lot of pictures up here. So you can see last year's team here. We have in the left, that's just them after a game. And on the bottom right, that's us at, we made state finals, I think, state championships. We sadly got crushed by the C-division crushers, as they're called, because they just sit in that division, and they just crush everyone who's in it. So, um, yeah, but Valorant, last year, we did pretty well since we made states. And this year, we're doing pretty well. We got crushed last week, but other than that, we've had a pretty good season so far. And everyone's been enjoying it. The teams have been communicating well. Everyone's been strategizing. So it's, it's nice to see them play together and, you know, just do well together and strategize. So. Next, we have Overwatch. I was on the Overwatch team last year. Overwatch was a little special. Tryouts felt a little bit more than what Valorant tryouts felt like, because we had Ethan there. Ethan is at Arcadia now, as Mr. Height said, playing for their team. And tryouts just felt extra special with him there running them, because he knew what we needed on the team. And he kind of directed to be able to get that on the team. We did, we did pretty well in Overwatch last year. We made it to playoffs, and we made it pretty far into playoffs. But then I think we faced the number-two team, and they crushed us. So we're getting better. This year, we plan on doing it in the spring, so we don't have a Overwatch team right now. But I'm feeling confident. I think some of our players from last year are going to make a return, and I think we're going to do well again. That was a little compilation of our Rocket League team playing. I didn't expect it to play immediately. But this year, we, we're going to have someone here to speak on Rocket League. I don't know much about Rocket League, but this year, we're doing pretty well. Last year, we did pretty well as well, I would say. So I think our Rocket, yeah, I can't really talk much on Rocket League. I'm kind of blanking. Do you want to, do you want to say anything about Rocket League?
So Rocket League is like soccer with cars. And there's, and I know, that sounds weird, right? Soccer with cars. It sounds, it, it's really interesting to watch. Highly competitive, and it's a really team-oriented game. Lots of passing and lots of communication. We have a student, Mateo, who is like a second-level grand champion, and he gets called out all the time by the shoutcasters for his amazing play. And it's a lot of fun to watch. So if you want to watch us, you'll have to go to the twitch.tv channel, is that right? And yeah, we'll post it at some point, so you can watch it. Okay? But thank you very much.
So we have a roster of about 15 students, but unfortunately, Josh was the only one who was able to make it today. So I do want to call out the other names in the, in the team. So in our Rocket League, we have Bryce Ziegler, Mateo, I don't want to, I don't want to, Canoneus, Nicholas Adam, and Ty Ziegler is in the Rocket League team. And in our Valorant team, it's Austin Frederick, Jeremiah Park, Skylar Lupo, Tyler Dillon, Tyson Hansenberger, Hansberger, Zoe Gannner, Brady Davis, and Joshua. Thank you all.
Of course, we're going to do a quick, like a five, not even, five-minute recess. All right. So we're good to resume, I think. Moving on to 1.08, comments on any topic. I'll open the floor to anyone from the public that would like to speak on any topic. You have three minutes. Please state your name and municipality. Okay? Seeing none, we can move on to Section 2, reports and presentations, student liaisons report. Ms. Tremba and Mr. Lees, welcome back, Ms. Tremba. We missed you.
Thank you. These past few weeks, our students have had a lot of accomplishments, and we'd just like to highlight a few. Firstly, congratulations to the cross-country athletes, Ali Madisic, Nate Boyer, Cooper Hay, and Kyle Tracy. They competed at the PIA double-A championships this weekend, and they all did very well. And we'd also like to congratulate the PV marching band, who competed at MetLife Stadium this weekend. They earned a fourth-place finish in their division, and we're very proud of our music department here at PV.
Looking forward, the high school fall production of Twelve Angry Men is taking place this Saturday and Friday. We'd like to encourage the community to check it out and wish all the members good luck. And then, in addition, finally, as tomorrow is election day, we'd like to take a moment to encourage all members of the community to exercise their right to vote and remind them to do so in a respectful manner. Thank you.
Thank you both very, very much. 2.02, president's report. I have nothing. 2.03, Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Ms. White. I have just two items this evening, so a fairly brief presentation. And first, I just want to alert the board and the community to parent-teacher conferences. So here we are in November already. It seems to have arrived pretty quickly. And we will be notifying our community tomorrow of scheduling conferences and providing them access to the system that allows them to sign up online. So they are approaching very quickly. In addition, I will follow up Conrad's comments and share that tomorrow, yes, is election day. And here in the district, excuse me, four of our schools are used as polling sites. Evergreen, Schweinsville, Skippack, and South Soar, four elementary schools. And our students don't have school tomorrow. Those offices may also be empty. So we will put a common message on our voice system, so that in the event individuals have questions about the election, we will defer them or refer them, excuse me, to the county. And we have that contact information there. We also put a pop-up on our website. In the event people have questions, our staff do not usually have the answer, so we wanted to try and be proactive around that. We've also made some requests of our staff not to park at Evergreen and not to use the Cagey Road entrance to Campus Drive, just to try and reduce some of the traffic. We do anticipate quite a few voters participating tomorrow. So we'll do our part to support the event and appreciate the support of others as well. And with that, it ends my report.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. 2.04, solicitor's report. Mr. Subers.
I have no report.
Thank you so much. 2.05, board and district committee reports. Is there anything that anyone would like to add since last month?
Yes.
Mr. Saylor?
So I participated in the delegate assembly over the weekend. Did, I don't know if any other board members did. I just wanted to voice my, I mean, if you were on the call, you heard my displeasure with PSBA. I've since spoken to quite a few boards since the meeting. You know, PSBA has an obligation to ensure that their delegate assemblies are run in a professional manner. And, and once again, they really dropped the ball in this instance. It was very similar to the issues in previous years post-COVID. Our, my biggest concern and other school boards locally around here, our biggest concern was that parliamentary procedure, once again, wasn't being followed, and their parliamentarian was not adequately answering questions. Most importantly, not all board members are getting the delegate assembly information, just the people who attend the delegate assembly. And so PSBA is advocating for mental health. This was one of the new amendments to the PSBA bylaws and goals for this year. That went down to a two-thirds vote. PSBA parliamentarian wasn't able to tell people in the room, in the building, or people on the call, how many voters there were, signed up to vote. When you logged into your PSBA assembly, you didn't have to enter your member ID. They admitted that some people logged in through the phone, and some people logged in through the computer simultaneously, so their counts might have been inflated. My biggest concern is almost every school district in Pennsylvania has a policy that if you attend a meeting virtually, that you have to be there the entire time, be able to hear what's happening, so you can vote with purpose. They also admitted that they weren't sure if people are entering the voting sessions after debate started. And that's just a big no-no for parliamentary procedure. If you're not in the room when the debate starts, you don't have access to vote on that amendment. And that, that, that portion of the delegate assembly meeting was a close vote, and unknown. And it aggravated quite a few school boards all throughout the Commonwealth. So they need to do a real better job in making sure that happens. They also did not allow a local school district in Montgomery County to advocate for an issue that was important to them. And that's also a key struggle, is that they hold their, their parliamentary meetings or their caucus meetings in private. They don't give a lot of school boards information on when those meetings happen. And it prevents schools from advocating for their community and their student base. So I know there is going to be an upcoming in-person legislation day. I know Perkyomen Valley normally sends two or three board members to those days. They happen in person in Harrisburg. I think it's really important, I've gone the last two years, that we continue to advocate and go to Harrisburg to meet with PSBA, meet with their legislatures. But there could be another delegate assembly next year, and it's, the onus will be for them to do a much better job. I know from talking to a couple of school boards today, that there could be looking at nine or 10 school districts in Pennsylvania that will be passing resolutions condemning PSBA and their actions in their next board meeting. It's not something I suggest that we do, but I do support those school, in school districts in doing so. It was a very, very rushed meeting. Hearing commentary that it's a Saturday, we want to get through this, was disappointing. And most importantly, they didn't allow people to speak. They limited debate. And they did it in a, in a way that wasn't even set through their bylaws and their standards that they have. So I came away very annoyed that they didn't really care about what people really wanted to talk about. And I called in a question how they were voting on their very important amendments. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your perspective. Mr. Saylor, I did pass something along to Dr. Russell and Mr. Mitchell earlier today with regard to a follow-up email, just talking a little bit about the overview of what the meeting entailed, what the platform included. And I plan to, hopefully, Barb, my intention was, Dr. Russell was to have that passed along in the memo this week. Okay. Is there any, go ahead.
Mr. Saylor, can you elaborate more on the limiting of debate or discussion?
Sure. There was debate on mental health issues. There was a participant that called a motion to call question. Normally, in parliamentary procedure, that motion to call question is heard right away. They allowed eight more people to talk, and then they decided to call the question. When I called a point of order on that and said that they did that out of turn, they, they ignored the point of order. There was a motion to call question that passed by small majority, but people who wanted to keep talking couldn't get an accurate number of how many voters there were in the room. And so it, it, a lot of schools left, I mean, I know I spoke to 17 school districts since the PSBA delegate meeting, left with a lot of questions with how that meeting was run. It should be run in person. If they can't figure out a way to do it virtually or in person, it should just be done in person, like it's been done in the past. More importantly, they didn't ask for your member ID. Every PS, every school board member has a, has an identification number for PSBA. They didn't allow for that, so they had no idea who was logging into their systems.
So I guess to that point about not understanding who to log in, I did hear them say that people were signing in in multiple modalities, but there was a unique link sent to every delegate, and the unique link was only for that delegate. So when you signed on, like I had, I signed on virtually, it was tied to my name.
If it was unique, you couldn't sign in multiple times.
I, I don't know what links people were using, but that was, as it was laid out prior, because we got emails prior to, you know, leading up to the date, there were rules and guidelines around that. There were three minutes of talking for each person that wanted to speak. They did ask for a vote as to whether or not the proposed amendment would be brought by the local school district, and it failed. So I, I just, I don't know that our takeaways were identical, but I do know that you have very strong feelings about parliamentary procedure and the way that things are run. I thought that the webinar format was a little frustrating, because you couldn't see anybody on the, you know, I think certain type of Zoom formats are more or less friendly. And I feel like a webinar is very, is anonymous to a certain extent. So you couldn't see the room at all. You could only see the, you know, the, the two folks, the solicitor and then the parliamentarian, I guess. So that, that part was a little bit, but I don't know. I guess I gave more grace to the process in terms of that was, it was hybrid. So. Did that answer your question, Mr. McKinney?
Yes, both, yeah.
Anything else? Anything else? Okey-dokey. So we are moving then on to the consent agenda. Section three, is there a motion to? Oh, we're not making a motion. We're building the consenting agenda. Please take a look at the consent agenda as it is already developed and we will continue to add to it. Section four, education. Mr. McKinney?
Good evening, Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. I have a brief update from the Education Committee. We have three items that we'd just like to go over very quickly. One, the comprehensive planning. We have our date set along with our subcommittee dates. We will start with the Steering Committee and the Comprehensive Planning Committee. As we see those dates there, we'll actually begin this Wednesday at 3:30 with our smallest group, our steering committee, before we move on to the larger Comprehensive Planning Committee. I'd like to thank Ms. White, Dr. Weston, and Mr. McKinney for volunteering to be part of this. Slight correction there that Dr. Weston has been invited to be part of the Steering Committee with Ms. White and Mr. McKinney will be part of the larger Planning Committee. Moving forward to the next slide, that we have the other two subcommittees, our Comprehensive Plan, our Professional Development Committee, and then our Induction Plan Committee, both of which have to have full committees independent of the larger, larger Comprehensive Planning Committee as per PDE. Next, our, tomorrow, November 5th, our Act 80 Professional Development Learning Day. This is our Viking Voyage. The Viking Voyage is a day of choice for our teachers where we have teachers and administrators who have volunteered to provide sessions. We have over 35 sessions that will occur throughout the day. We'll start off with a morning collaboration where the teachers will, the staff will be afforded about an hour and a half of time to get together to, to plan and to discuss professional learning communities and our supervision plan. After that, they will move into three sessions. We have some really exciting offerings that are being offered. One of the larger sessions that people are going to come to is a session on how to manage grief, which is a very important topic for us. And it, you know, it just really took off as a, as a topic that we will be discussing as well. We also tried something a little bit different, a set of open sessions called an Uncharted Voyage where people get to come together and have collaborative discussions around articles as well. So we are excited to offer our next Viking Voyage. And then the last thing that we have on, on the announcements is just a recap of the English Language Development Family Fun Night, which took place. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Kia Champagne-Lee for putting on and working with her team to put on such a fantastic night of fun for our families. We had over 120 students and their families who participated in the night and we have just lots of pictures from the event. During the event, of course, there was food, games, information was given out as well. It was a focus on literacy where there were book tables that were set up where the students got to walk away with a lot of different free books that were, have been gathered and donated throughout the year. There was a lot of joy in, in the celebration, a lot of really great feedback from the families who participated. And, you know, this is one of those things that each year it gets a little bit bigger and a little better. So we're really excited about what happened with this English Language Development Family Fun Night. So are there any questions or comments from any of those three items? Okay, thank you very much.
Also, there is item 402, approval of line-wide software program at a cost of $41,907.50 to run from January 1st, 2025 to January 1st, 2026. Any comments, questions, thoughts? Hearing none. We shall move that to consent. And then the enrollment reports are there. So for the enrollment report for November and also the charter school enrollments. Any thoughts or questions about any of those items for Mr. Mitchell or Dr. Russell?
No, thank you.
Not hearing any? We shall move on to the next section. That's my section. Ms. White?
Thank you, Mr. McKinney and Mr. Liggett. Section five, business.
Thank you. And for the Finance Committee, the whole, Mr. Jim Weaver.
Good evening, everybody. We have a heavy lift tonight for the Finance Committee, the whole, so we'll just get right into it. We have a, the annual capital projects presentation. My usual cohort, Mr. Fabrizio, is not here tonight. He had a family emergency, so he could not be here, so I'll do my best. Then we have the 2526 revenues presentation. It's our first foray into the complete budgetary process for 2526. We'll have Mr. Moran come up and describe the true-up costs and then we'll hit upon the preliminary audit results for 2324. So, the annual capital projects presentation is mandated by the state that we do this on a yearly basis. We go through this process and remember, this is a living, breathing document. We can tie this directly back to the work that was done in 2018 by the architectural firm AEM out of Berks County that was hired by the school board at that time. And they went through the, all of our buildings and all of our needs, came up with various cost estimates to replace things, looked at things both in terms of capital avoidance, capital replacement, major program planning. But the one thing that it did not have was an educational component to it necessarily. We took that presentation, we matched it up with an identical athletic master's facility plan that was completed at the same time and that became our living, breathing capital projects plan that we've been regurgitating every year at this time. Remember that a lot of these things can be tied directly back into that program as presented. It typically has a project number. Some of adjustments have been made because of just cost estimates and the things that we looked at then as opposed to now and the various ways that we changed doing business. Of course, in the middle of that, we had a pandemic, right? So we, we kind of changed some of those approaches as well. And Mr. Fabrizio and I have made adjustments up through the end of October this past month to get those into the process from a priority perspective. And also, whenever we have adds to the additions to the list, you will see JFAB dot XX. That means that those adjustments and adders were added since Mr. Fabrizio has been here. Heading into the overall program, this should not surprise anybody as we sit here with our eight buildings and our multiple facilities that we work on and work through. A total estimate of about $31,401,000 would be the estimate as of today if we were to go through and address all of these concerns. I'm not here tonight to recommend any of that. Remember, we don't have a lot of funding for any of these items, so I'm just presenting them in summary format as we look at that. Behind each and every one of these line items, you can see an estimated, how many years, a five-year program going out, six to 10 years, and then 10-plus years. That is in the professional estimation of Mr. Fabrizio and I as we go through this process of what things we really need to address. We do need, we do know, occasionally, we do have emergencies that pop up and we do have other alternative sources for offsetting these, such as grant opportunities that we continue to work through. So total nugget, $31,400,000. Last year, it was about $33 million. So, yes, you're going to say, Jim, we had a couple of ESCO projects that we're working our way through. Remember, those are multi-year projects, number one. Number two, we've added some things to this particular list and you will see that as we go through. Each building now has a breakout and a breakdown. So the high school there, there are about 24 projects that we continue to track in various formats. Total estimated cost, $6.3 million. And here are two pages of the listings. Again, anything with an HS dot will tie directly into the AEM report and we continue to struggle and gather those items. Anything with a JFAB dot XX, that means we've added it since that report. And with the double asterisks there, you can tell that the AHU replacement, for instance, that is included in the ESCO 5.0, which we've already approved and we're moving forward on. Moving on to middle school east, and again, stop me at any point in time, the idea is just to get this information out there and get it on the record. There are 18 projects, $5.7 million, oh, I'm sorry, $7.25 million. That's my, my fault there. But here's the breakdown in the listing that actually agrees to the, to the total number there. Again, MSE 24 is the $3.7 million that is included in ESCO 5.0 Exhibit A that we are addressing as well. One of the items there that we added, we actually have a KG there for Karthik Ganesh. That is the add for the auditorium upgrades and that is the component that we've already moved forward with and approved for Phase 1. We also have a Phase 2 and a Phase 3 that we're working on as well. And you'll see that in Middle School West as well, a matching component to that. Speaking of Middle School West, $7,010,000. And again, these buildings are approaching now 20-plus years. So for, for West, East is 30 years, approaching 30 years. So we have multiple heavy-duty infrastructure into these areas that we're, we're tracking at this point in time. Again, $7 million. The major one for that is the AHU air handling units for West. Evergreen? Not so much. $891,000. Again, a major component there. Just to note, for this one, is the fire alarm system. And again, we're moving forward with that because we were awarded through the DCED $1.1 million of our grant. We are waiting for additional information. There is a board motion for you to consider. We're waiting for the state to come back to us because they said, guess what, you have the grant, but now we're waiting for all the official backup so we can get this thing moving along. Schweinfville, $677,000. And the major component to that, fire alarm system. Again, there's a fire alarm system in East and West as well. Skipback, same thing, $930,000. Fire alarm system there is $260,000. Again, these are things that we've been tracking and you can notice that there are paving and parking as well in many of these slides. We've addressed some of those areas, some of those areas we continue to work on and we have a plan on those. South Elementary School, $321,000 because remember, South was the major component for ESCO 3.0. We put a lot of dollars into that to renovate that building and I think we did a pretty good job overall. And so there is the listing for South. PV Athletics, we're tracking about 11 projects, about $4.5 million. The major component to this, of course, is the $3.5 million that we have in there for the Hilltop Synthetic Fields. That's in there. There's not much of a push for that, but yet it is a project that we have up there and you notice that's 10-plus years out. So we've really got to work on that. I'm not saying that it's going to happen tomorrow, but it is something that we considered when we put in our initial turf fields to see what the reaction was in the community and if need be, move forward with those fields. Right now, we seem to be in a good place with our uses and our rentals. So there is no push for that. It's just there.
I have a quick question.
Mr. Saylor?
The lower turf field lighting automation?
Yes.
102, that was, the original cost was 102,000 that the board approved?
No. So the, the lower turf field lighting automation is an updated estimate. We have not done that.
We approved?
For Keenan Stadium.
For Keenan Stadium.
Yes.
And how much was that?
That was 50-some-odd thousand dollars.
Yeah. So which field is this?
This would be for the entire lower field.
Are you installing lights too?
No.
You're just installing automation for the lights?
Yes.
Why is it so much more money than at the regular field?
Our updated estimate showed a lot of, a lot of an increase associated with the electronic components. Again, it's an estimate. We'd have to go out for bid and do all that kind of stuff, so we're tracking that estimate. One of the adders that we have had is the football shed replacement, the last line item there. You can see that's $125,000. We're hoping that when we do the bid and go out to KPN, it's a little bit less than that. But in Mr. Fabrizio's estimation, we need to make sure that we have enough monies and just look at reality of what, what's there. One of the other items that we still have is $3.5 million for the administration building, operations building, call it whatever you want. That, because we're still working our way through that, that could be ground in a pole barn, that could be purchase a new building. We're working our way through that. That's $3.5 million. Again, no commitment there. That's just a listing of where it might end up, just to be reality and be conservative with where it might end up. And we continue to look at various options. So as a note, our, the school board and the administrations have been working very hard on a lot of capital projects that we've completed this year. The list shows a lot of that effort that has paved off at this point in time. This is because your dedication and your trust and commitment in the fact that what we're doing is getting, refreshing a lot and renovating a lot of these areas that are needed. We certainly appreciate the support behind those items. As far as funding goes, right now, we have in total about $17 million worth of capital project monies available to us. $8.5 million is tied directly into the 24A bond proceeds, which is the Exhibit A component. So ideally, we would spend all that down or have a little bit of savings left when that project is done. Bond Series 2023 is actually the ESCO 5.0, which is nearing the end of its term. We're finalizing paperwork now and within the next couple of months, I do expect final payment to go out. The majority of these reflect interest earnings over the time that we have had those bonds in our possession. So about $17 million, quick reference to the $31 million, whether the, the estimates or not. So you know that we've got some, some work to do on our end to continue to prioritize and continue to look at what it is that we feel we need versus what we can afford and how we can fit it into our current budget. Any questions on that? There's an awful lot in there. Please, if you have any questions or concerns, take a look at the lists. Anything that you think is missing in there, please let us know. Mr. Fabrizio and I will, will make the adjustment and add it. Okay. Moving on to the first look of 2526 revenues. Remember, this is kind of a funny time because we've finished our 2324 audit figures and you'll see that in the preliminary numbers. We're in the middle of the 2425 year and now we're trying to project eight months out how we're going to start the 2526 budget year. We always start with the revenues. That's a good, easy, soft start for us typically. And so tonight, here we go. This is officially the beginning of the 2526 budget process in public. Truth be told, we never really stopped budgeting, right, in the business office. The revenues are going to grow, estimated by 0.8%. And one of the main reasons is that that growth is kind of leveled out a little bit is because we've met the top of our earned income tax. Over the years, we've been at $12 million, $14 million in our budget and we've exceeded that. We've gotten $14 million in actual and then $16 million in two years in a row. Remember, as we came out of the pandemic, there was some question and concern about how the economy would respond. One of those key components that we track from an alternative revenue source is the earned income tax. That's the power and the strength of the people that live here and work here in Perkyomen Valley. That has remained steady at that $16 million mark. So going right out, I'm recognizing that $16 million as a steady component. If the economy goes batty, we might have to re, take a look at that. But I don't envision it growing as much as it has over the past couple of years. So that's one of the main reasons why it's consistent and kind of steady at this point in time. We have plenty of time to make that grow, to really do some additional research. The data, as the year goes on, will strengthen our, our reasoning and validate where we're at. We have to get through tomorrow. We have to figure out how that's going to impact tomorrow. We have to get into January. We have to get into February to see what the governor is going to provide in his budget, particular budget for next year. So a lot of the state subsidies at this point in time, early on, we kind of freeze at the current point. Now we break it out and again, the board is familiar with these numbers. We do show a steady growth of about 5%, or 0.5% in our assessments. We do have housing units coming on. However, this is the time of the year that we have assessment appeals. And these assessment appeals are coming in because they see an opportunity as the common level ratio goes down. And these assessment appeals are coming in because they see an opportunity as the common level ratio goes down, one of the variables that drives one of those taxes. That goes down. Individuals and corporations see the opportunity for them to ask for a reassessment and get their values reassessed. And we are going through that now as well. We're monitoring that closely with Lauren Chesney and Dave Comer from Fox Rothschild. But those are offsetting kind of those new homes coming on. Again, this is an estimate, early on, we'll see how that progresses. I show earned income tax at that sixteen point two million dollar mark. Real estate transfer tax, we do expect a lot of properties continue to go through. That's been fairly consistent over the past couple of years from actuals, so we'll recognize two hundred thousand dollars coming out. As a side note to that, our taxpayers pay their bills. We have less delinquent tax properties coming on board because our taxpayers pay our bills. So the, the reaction is, is that our delinquent taxes are going to hold, are actually going to be a reduction of about a hundred thousand dollars. Again, that could change if the economy goes belly up, something weird happens, we'll adjust at that point in time. But for now, we'll recognize something that more reflects what the actual dollar figures are over the years. Moving on to state, you can see there where, A, we've held the basic instructional subsidy at the exact amount that we've budgeted this year. One of the main reasons is, and I've said this before, is that the S B is driven not just about what happens here in Perkyomen Valley School District, but now one of the critical components of some of those six variables is how we are doing in comparison with other school districts throughout the state of Pennsylvania. So while our socioeconomics might be changing and we might have more free and reduced lunches in the past, under the old style, that may have influenced us and we may have been able to predict that a little bit. In this particular case now with the new variables, it's not just how we do, but it's how the other four hundred and ninety nine school districts do as far as they're free and reduced as well. So it's become hard, very hard to predict that. So at this early stage, we'll be conservative, we'll keep it the same. There is no guarantee. One of the other variables is what the governor is going to put into that line item to help fund that. We are also in flex between the old system and the new system. They're doing it in one sixth increments. So it's kind of convoluted at this point in time. So all that to be said, it's the same for now and we'll continue to monitor. Same with special education. However, you can see that special education has grown, not only in more of the services that we provide, of course, on the expenditure side, but also in the need that Harrisburg is finally realizing that we have some special needy students and that they should subsidize that a little bit more. Typically, special education gets a consistent, positive increase on a yearly basis. There's less contention with the special education component as compared to the basic instructional subsidy. Transportation is steady. Of course, one of the things with transportation is we have less bus routes because we've now tightened everything. So less of those dollars or expenditures are going on to those reports to Harrisburg, which means, guess what? That variable is going to change. And so if we're paying less, the expectation is we'll get less out of Harrisburg eventually over time. Social Security and Retirement, this board understands that that's a positive revenue, but on the expenditure side, it's double that for Peasars and FICA. So we only get fifty percent of a revenue for Social Security and Retirement. And federal revenues, we have always consistently stayed away from budgeting federal revenues. So don't be, don't be concerned with the actuals that Weaver only budgeted seven forty one and twenty one, twenty two, and the actual was two point two million, almost two point three million, that's because of the Esser monies. We, we were told, just be careful because you don't know what years you were going to spend it on, so keep your federal money the same. And that's exactly what we're doing. There's a graph that shows a little bit of that. And again, these are some questions that we continue to ask ourselves on a, on a weekly basis. Amy and I meet every week now to talk about revenues. And once we kick off with the equal sign on the expenditures, we'll also make a component of a half an hour or forty five minutes on the expenditure side. Then that meeting goes from about thirty minutes or about fifteen minutes right now to about an hour and a half on a weekly basis for us to track all of these things and to see where we might be able to stretch our revenues and restrict our expenditures a little bit while not harming our educational program. Alternative revenue sources, this is a quick chart that shows where those come from. Earned income tax, real estate tax, I'm sorry, interest, interest, real estate transfer tax and interim real estate taxes. These are really powerful economic drivers for us. You can see in twenty one, twenty two, the interest rates were way low. We had a lot of real estate transfer, but the interest earnings on seventy million dollars in the bank was eighty two thousand dollars because of our limited ability to invest. Which is okay, right? We want to be conservative with taxpayer money. However, now that the interest rates go from a point one five to a five percent, those interest earnings grow to almost two point two million dollars and help us to offset our budget. The fear in my office and Mrs. Heard will usually give me aspirin is that the interest rates go back now because the Fed is consistently trying to cut the interest rates to help fight inflation. Regardless of what side of the aisle anybody is on, it's a double edged sword for us. We would love to see those interest rates on earnings go up. However, we recognize that those interest earnings also drive economic factors such as mortgages for your houses, which means that people might not be able to afford our, our real estate, which means our real estate transfer goes down. So it's kind of a different way for us to look at that and that's our world. But just a, a point of reference, when these are alternative revenue sources that really show the strength of the economy. We're happy when the economy is strong, not so happy when the economy goes the other way. Next budget steps, I'll bring forward the equal sign on December second. We will have the act one resolution ready to go where we will request the school board approve to stick to the four point O. That is the act one index this year. We'll stick to the four point O or lower. Remember, our first goal in the business office, once we hit the equal sign, is to get us to that four point O mark. After that, then we get into deliberations and we continue to drive that interest or the expense, that real estate tax expense down as far as we can. Okay, so we're all on board, we all agree on that. In December, a five year projection, the Peasars rate will be officially certified December twenty twenty four. It used to be December first, but sometimes they wait a couple of weeks, which drives us crazy. But that's just the way that it goes. And the governor, of course, is going to provide the Commonwealth budget in February. Couple of key factors for us as we continue to move forward to get to that equal sign on December second. Any questions in first look revenues? If not, thank you. And of course, if you have any questions or concerns, send Amy and I an email and we'll get on it. Okay, true up costs, Mr. Moran.
Okay, good evening. As Mr. Weaver shared, this is the time of year that we are developing our budget for the next school year. When we go through that budgeting process for our personnel costs, we look at who are our current personnel at the beginning of this school year and what are their salaries and costs associated with those individuals? That drives our personnel costs for next year's budget. As you know, as the school year progresses, we start to experience some changes in our personnel. We have individuals that may separate from the district. As a result, we have new individuals coming in. So by the end of the school year, those individuals that we used to develop the budget for next school year look different than those individuals in the seats at the end of the school year. And so too, because we have different individuals sitting in the seats, we also have different costs associated with those individuals. That drives us really to develop what our true up costs are for the next school year. And that's where we are right now for, for this current school year. So in front of you, you'll see the list of staff members that have changed over the course of the last year that have driven a change from what was budgeted for this school year versus what our actual costs would be for personnel. And just some examples, when you're looking at the left hand side, so we had seventeen professional staff members who separated from the district and were replaced. You'll notice that there's quite a few individuals where it says replaced salary step placement. We had twelve individuals that were at step fifteen. When replacing those individuals, typically we're hiring individuals that might come in at a lower step on our salary schedule. That drives a lower cost for their salaries and expenses. So the district typically then experiences a positive return in the amount that we're associated with our expenses for salaries versus that, that we budgeted. You'll see our total replaced contract teacher salaries, so the seventeen individuals that left the district was at one million, six hundred sixty, sixty thousand dollars. And then the total new contract teacher salaries was at one million, one hundred eighty six thousand. Total savings for contract salaries, again, this is just salaries, is four hundred seventy four thousand, six hundred one dollar for our professional staff. On the right hand side, you'll see those same salaries associated with our administrative staff. We had ten individuals that left or separated from the district and were replaced by other individuals. And you can see the savings for salaries from our administrators was just over a hundred thirteen thousand dollars. Just below that, you'll see what the total savings are from our professional staff members as well as our administrative staff for a combined total of just under six hundred thousand dollars. Are there any questions or comments about our true up costs for this year? Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Moran. So one other component to this is that the board has allowed the administration over the past couple of years to recognize that number. And as we go through the personnel process throughout the budget year, we've actually utilized this in some ways to save dollars moving forward from a budget perspective. And I would hope that the school board would be in, in approval of that. That really helps us as we go through that process. That's our plan. If Amy and I had our druthers, you know that we would be looking at that and just taking right, right out and saying, okay, we're getting close. But that's not the way the world works here in education and we certainly understand that. We don't want to get a, you know, there's a process to this. So Dr. Russell will oftentimes sit in the, the meetings and will, will play shuffleboard. And at the end of it, it gets so convoluted that I have to take picture. And then we have to dig that out when we do the true up costs for the next year as well. So we remember what we did and how we did it. So that number will float around, you'll see that, no action on that. That's just our process and it's worked successfully over the past couple of years. Any questions on that? Okay, one last component, preliminary audit figures for twenty three, twenty four. Mr. Hogan and his new company with him has been in. You can see there where we had budget and revenues and all that kind of stuff. We have a positive at the end of the process of five hundred and ten thousand, six thirty. We are going through the individual line items now as we speak. It's taking us quite, it will take us quite a while to get through. But some revenue notes, earned income tax and realty transfer tax collections were one point seven million dollars more than budget. Investment earnings, six hundred thousand dollars more than the budget. Again, that's that strength of those, the economy. Unbudgeted plan con reimbursement of one million dollars, that's the catch up from P D E associated with the process that we do going back for previous bond issues. And that share that the state has, if we follow the carrot and build buildings as they want us to, under the old style, it doesn't happen that way anymore, they would give us money to do that. So we pay ten dollars, they give us two dollars back. That's a catch up from P D E. Seven hundred thousand dollars more in the basic education subsidy because all the variables kind of played out that way and the governor and the legislature pushed a ton of money into one of those variables that helped to drive that. And then three hundred thousand dollars of Esser monies that we didn't budget. Again, that's that federal component that we all agreed, we're not going to budget for on revenues or expenditures. On the expenditure side, special education costs, one point three million dollars over budget. Charter school, one point five million dollars over budget. That's not really a surprise, right? Got a lot of things and needs that, that happened there. The charter school, we are pinpointed on that one, much like a lot of school boards today. One of the revisions that Representative Sarisi, his process, we had hoped that that would bring a little bit more relief. Unfortunately, we ended up with something a little bit like a, kind of a refund and a renewed three sixty three, which drives, P D three sixty three, which drives how much each individual regular education and special education student costs. Our, our costs went down when we did the revised three sixty three. That's great for P V. Some school districts are not happy because it worked in the reverse for them. So I'm not sure how that's going to work into the future. We benefited from that, so we'll see a little bit of relief twenty four, twenty five, because that's immediate right now. And then, of course, the offsetting unbudgeted expenditures for Esser. And then the committed to capital projects, again, we commit monies into the committed to the capital projects, it stays in the general fund. We don't show an expenditure. When an expenditure comes in, Amy and I match it up in the back, Amy actually codes it, comes out of that fund balance, that expenditure shows up as an unbudgeted expenditure, but it, it's coming out of the fund balance. So five hundred and ten thousand, remember, we were expecting to spend one point five million dollars of our unassigned fund balance. So overall, a positive five hundred and ten thousand dollars and we'll take it. I don't expect this number to change, some minor adjustments maybe perhaps. Amy and Carl will continue to work on that until we finalize our annual financial report and submit it on November thirtieth. The other half of that is what comes up on our balance sheet and where our fund balances are. And you can see there how, what the inner, inner agency changes are at the end of the day. The eight percent, that little red dot down below shows our eight percent maximum allowed by P D. Remember, it is eight percent of this year's expenditure based upon how we did last year. That's how the state runs things. So our unassigned fund balance is nine point four million dollars, which is seven point one four percent of this year's expenditures. So it's under the eight percent. In previous years, we were over that, so we had to make some additional adjustments and transfers out to get to the eight percent. We don't have to do that this year. That's really all I have to say about preliminary numbers. If anything changes drastically, Amy and I will be sure that we get something to Dr. Russell and get it into a weekend memo. But I think we're, we're actually in pretty good shape as far as finalizing those numbers. Any questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Item five point zero, or anybody else have anything for the committee, the whole, or may I move on? Okay, good. Item five point zero two, it's asking for an approval of the agreement for the alertis system. If there are no objections, I would ask for that to move on to consent. An approval of the installation of the barrier gates for the property. Without an objection, I would ask for that to move to consent. Approval of the asphalt for the high school parking lot. I'll move that on to consent. Approval of the D C E D infrastructure grant award. If there's no objection, we'll move that on to consent. Approval of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five special education contracts and cost of services. Yep?
Mr. Liggett, I'm sorry, if I may, can we go back to item five dot zero three? Mr. Weaver, didn't we have a, a cost for those? And that should be incorporated into the motion.
It should be, we can, yes.
Do you remember the cost offhand? Is it in the backup? I don't, I don't have, I'm not logged in right now.
I think the estimate was ten thousand dollars per gate, so it would have been forty thousand dollars total.
That's what I recall, between forty and forty five thousand, so that the board has some awareness of that and we can add that after tonight. Thank you.
Well, I was going to say, let's, why don't we, do we want to pull that off or we can? I know that we discussed it in the safety and operations committee, the total cost, but you're right, it's not a part of this motion.
Since we're amending it, why don't we hold it off consent and we'll bring it next week?
Okay, very good then. Five point zero three, the barrier gates will not be on the consent agenda and will be updated for next week, correct Jim? He said yes. Did I get through zero five? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Five point zero-six, that one I also stated, the special education, 2024-2025, that's where I got interrupted. Without objection, we'll move that on to consent. Sorry, Dr. Russell, I didn't mean it meanly, I mean...
I understand what you meant.
Yeah, you know, I had a groove going on.
Well, you could have caught the money missing from the motion before you made it.
That's assuming I'm reading things, isn't it?
Oh, well, okay, so, oh, seven, moving on.
Thank you. Five point oh-seven, approval of the 2024 extended school year contracts for ESY. Without objection, we'll move to consent. Approval to post the signs at the entrances for scory book trails is item number five point zero-eight. Without objection, we'll move it. Go ahead.
Those images don't pop up, so it's hard for the board to say what they're passing.
Yes, I am not sure why those images are not showing up.
You want to hold that off consent as well, and then we can show it? I think they did show images at Safety and Ops, but I don't remember.
Yeah, it's a gate picture.
Yeah. There were drawings that they did.
Yeah.
I will include that in the memo too, Mr. Saylor. We'll add it here, and then I'll follow up, just so you have it in two places. Thank you.
The five point oh, five point eight.
So, for lack of the graphics, we're going to leave this one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Don't worry.
You can have your reasons, it's fine. It's a consent.
Don't worry, Bob. The meeting next week will still be over in seventeen minutes, we'll be fine. I'll still be, I'll be at the gym by eight.
Bob, don't spoil business. We gave you business this week.
I'm trying not to.
Come on, move us along.
All right. Next item, five point zero-nine, reports grants and donations. It's attached, no, no action needed. That ends my section.
You mean, I can't hold it off consent?
You could try.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leggett. I appreciate it.
Don't tempt.
Payment of bills, Mr. Keenan.
Yes, my section, six oh-one, we have payment of bills, and six oh-two, we have approval of treasures report, both on track for next week.
Thank you so much, Mr. Keenan. Professional Personnel, Dr. Campley, section seven.
Thank you. Seven point zero-one through seven point zero-five are already all listed on consent, and if there are no questions, they will all stay on consent. All good? Okay, so, seven point zero-six is the approval of the high school girls' flag football team. Are there any questions? If not, we will move that to consent. I wasn't sure about this one, because I know there were questions at the last meeting that we had.
Yeah, there were, there were questions at Wellness, Dr. Campley, and we, one of our questions was to make sure that girls' football would run like every other co-curricular activity that the school has, that it wouldn't be handled any differently with costs associated with the cost of the program, uniforms. Obviously, there's a grant included, but not to make it a special program, just a very fit in the process of everything else, just like we did with girls' wrestling.
So, were you comfortable with the answer that was given, or do you want to hold this off of consent?
The answer that was given, when? At the meeting? Or in the memo, in here?
The memo.
I was comfortable with the answer given at the memo, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? And then we will move that to consent as well. Seven point oh-seven is the approval of the memorandum of understanding. If there are no questions, we will move that to consent. And then that ends my section.
Thank you so much, Dr. Campley. Mr. Fountain, section eight, support personnel.
All right, section eight, eight oh-one through eight oh-five are all currently on consent. Are there any questions or concerns on any of those? No, seeing none, they'll stay on consent. Eight point oh-six is a request to approve the creation of nine additional cafeteria monitor positions to support professional learning communities at Evergreen, Skipback, and Schwenksfield Elementary Schools, three at each building. Is there questions, concerns, comments?
Yeah, I have questions about this. I know there was a presentation done towards the back end of last year that a test run was going to happen, I think at Mr. DeAndrea's school at that time. Obviously, I assume that the test went well, and we're now looking to move this forward to all the additional buildings.
Yes, so, he piloted, if you will, or trialed, the idea of freeing up teachers at each grade level once during the six-day cycle so that they could hold a PLC, or a very intentional learning community meeting with their team members. The other buildings would like to also do the same. It was successful. What was challenge, it was successful on the part of teachers being able to come together and have those conversations. What was challenging is finding the employees.
So, two questions then. Does this have any budget implications with the nine additional people being added to the, to the team? Yes, Peasars and health insurance and everything? And then, at what rate do we think we would be able to fill them all, and how would we fill them?
There will definitely be a budget implication. This will be an add to the budget, or it'll be incorporated as Mr. Weaver presents expenditures next week. So, these positions do not currently exist, they will be new, but again, incorporated. Mr. Moran maybe can speak to the challenges around, or the successes we've experienced with securing these support appointments.
And if Mr. Weaver can just correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I believe they are included in this year's budget, those positions, is that correct?
I don't believe that these, these positions are included in the budget for this year.
So, we can check on that, and we can follow up with the board, and then what we can also do is add to the admin content the projected cost, so that you have that as a reference moving forward.
Where would the money come from?
Well, right now, go ahead.
I was going to say, it'd come out of unassigned fund balance.
Do we know the number, you know, so when, when is this, obviously, the board passes this next week, you start hiring people right away. How long did it take to hire people at South? How long was that process, and how long do you think the process will be now? My other question is, how would you do the hiring? Are you going to do it school at a time, or if you have three people, one at Skipback, one at Evergreen, one at Schwenksfield? Like, what would the process look like?
The process would be to hold the interviews together. So, we would post all three schools, looking for now nine cafeteria recess monitors, and then the principals would coordinate and hold those interviews together, so that we're interviewing the candidates at the same time. Typically, individuals that are seeking these positions are parents that want to stay in the school where their children attend. So, we've been able to fill the positions, the challenge comes in, once they're filled, sometimes individuals then look for something more full-time, Monday through Friday, and then they transfer into those positions, and then we have to, again, start the process. So, we were successful, we had a lot of candidates last year go through, but we did have individuals who were onboarded, started in the position, left, went to a different position, and then we had to re-initiate the process.
My, my last question was, if I, I tried to look back to the, the meeting where Mr. DeAndrea spoke and then reread the minutes, but I thought there was a scheduling process with this as well, how schedules change. So, I'm just curious how, you know, let's say, for instance, we get lucky, and in Skipback, we can start this in January. Is there, is there a change that the principals now need to do with, with the, with the teachers, or is it just, this is going to free up their time, and they can do other learning meetings in the, in that time process? Because one of his, part of his presentation was also a scheduling with the teachers.
So, the scheduling aspect comes into play around, for example, when kindergarten teachers would have recess, these monitors would cover so that they can meet. When first grade has recess, these monitors would cover, and then first grade, that team would meet. So, there was no change to the master schedule that I recall at all, but what was scheduled was when which grade level of teachers would meet which day of the cycle. So that there are six teams in the building, and there are three of these monitors. So, the idea is that they can cover recess for each grade-level team once per cycle. That was the scheduling.
When is the startup for this? Is it, is it an immediate-type startup?
You know, I, I think administration is recommending the support for our teachers to be able to come together and meet, because time to meet is, is at such a premium, particularly at the elementary level, where teachers are really committed all day, that half-an-hour recess was some time that the administration and Mr. DeAndrea was very creative and resourceful, or attempting to be, just to be able to afford those teachers that opportunity to come together and discuss what it is that benefits their practice and what happens for kids, for students. So, it really was an effort to be resourceful with what we have available and afford teachers that time that otherwise is at a, is at a premium.
And it's, is it currently still happening at South?
Yes.
And so, Mr. Marsh, who's now moved into that position?
He's at Evergreen, so it would be, it would be Mrs. O'Sullivan.
Mrs. O'Sullivan, does she like the process?
You know, I, I don't know that I've spoken to her directly about it. It's a fair question, and we can follow up on that. I mean, the, the principals all want it, they, they appreciate being able to afford their teachers that time to meet. It's very purposeful.
Based on the discussion and questions, would it be suggested that this be held off of consent?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, what, what I, so, Mr. Saylor shaking, no, okay.
I'm, I'm okay putting it, leaving it on consent, if you want to keep it off. I don't, my answers were, my answers were questioned, my questions were answered.
Okay, the only reason I would have held it, Mr. Fountain, is, and again, I'll defer to the board, it's the will of the board, is because we didn't have the numbers here for you. And I know that you often like to see the numbers, the total costs, and we're happy to provide those so that you feel better informed before you take the action.
We do technically, because we approved the three in South already, so it's just...
So, you have a good sense. You do have a good sense, yeah.
And I assume, I assume it's going to come from that five hundred thousand dollars that you just found, we're going to take some?
I don't, I don't know that these positions are going to eat up the five hundred, and these are not benefits positions generally. These folks don't normally receive benefits through the district, so there's no implication there.
Not health benefits.
In deference to the idea of having full information, I would suggest that it be held off consent.
No problem. So, eight point oh-six will be held off consent until next week, then.
Which concludes then my section.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fountain. Dr. Weston, governance. I didn't recognize you. You gave me a scare when I looked over before.
Okay, item nine point zero-one, the first reading on policies. There are quite a number of policies presented tonight for first reading. Any questions, comments, or discussion on any of the policies presented for first reading?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, because I know, Mr. Subers, you weren't at the policy meeting, and we had, I had some questions about the injunction that we have in, in the school. And I'm still confused, and I, I'm just confused on how this injunction is forcing us to have policies for two school districts.
The injunction...
Excuse me, not two school districts.
Two, two, within the district.
Yeah.
The injunction is building-specific. So, the injunction only applies to buildings, and that's just the way it was entered. It, it is literally building-specific. So, the court, with the participation of plaintiffs, published these lists of individual school buildings within the various school districts throughout the Commonwealth where a Moms for Liberty parent had a child, and that was not all of our schools. So, the injunction only applies to those specific schools. It does not apply to the, the other schools that aren't, not on the list. So, it, it, it only, it doesn't apply to all of our schools. So, that's why you would be having the two, you know, policies. And just by way of update on that Kansas case, the parties have all submitted their briefs and supportive motion, their motions for summary judgment. So, now, I, but, so the, you know, it's in the hands of the court to make a decision at this point. I think those, those briefs were just filed over the last several days, if not, or maybe last week. But as of today, they, they have been filed, and we're waiting for the court to make its final disposition. I can't tell you how long that's going to take.
So, my, my biggest worry, that I was asking Dr. Russell and the lawyer that was there, is how quickly will this board need to... Let's say the, the judge throws the case out. How quickly are, are we able to remove the policy? Or is it just automatic through the wording that's there, the vernacular that's there, since the case gets thrown out, it goes back to the other policy, meaning we're no longer having...
New policy. You're saying if the injunction is, is...
The injunction's removed, and all of our schools...
The injunction's removed, then, then all the schools have to follow the, the new regulations.
And there's nothing we need to do to make that happen?
I will have to, I, I'll have to confirm what you're...
Yeah. My biggest concern is there, there's going to be an injunction that's thrown out, let's just say, on a, on a Tuesday. Wednesday morning, the school district still has a policy for that school. Yes, there's vernacular in the policy that states the school district, there's something on our website that says, "These school districts," but it, but at some point, we need to remove all that and then get back to having one school district, one policy.
I'll confirm that. I'll, I'll address that concern, I'll look into that and see what the specific wording is.
It's not just us, there are other school districts in the Commonwealth that have...
I know, we've been dealing with it, and we have four attorneys who are kind of devoting seventy percent of their time on this. One, one in specific dealing with the policy issues. So, and I see that you're basing yours off the PSBA policies. We were going, we were offering different options, so I will confirm.
No, I, I think we took, we base ours off of the Fox.
Off the Fox?
Yes, sir.
I, I will review that specific issue and report back next week.
Yeah, so, the Fox policy did have vernacular in there, but I'm, I'm just...
Well, you know, because I do know that even, you know, and it is complicated, even the policy, even the school buildings that were subject to the injunction...
Yeah.
Where you, or no, even the school buildings that weren't, where you were adopting the new procedures and the new language, you still had to retain the, the old process for the older cases. But I, I'll have to look at what you're, you know, the specific issue you're questioning, I want to look at the policies and I'll report back.
Okay, and so, Dr. Russell, does this mean come Tuesday morning, next week, next Tuesday morning, we have to put on our website the schools? Because that was in the policy, in, in the verbiage. So, is that for this, is this November, or is that December?
It's...
It would be the second reading.
Right, it would be the second reading, technically, yes. It would be December, yes.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And we may know, we may know more by then.
Yeah.
Okay, so, these policies all remain on first reading, and we will continue discussion of them as needed. Item nine point zero-two, approval to hold a second reading and adopt policies. The, there are also a number of policies presented for a second reading and approval. Any comments, questions, or discussion around these policies? It does not appear to be, so we can move the approval of these policies to consent, and that ends section nine.
Thank you, Dr. Weston. Brings us to section ten, closing items. Ten point oh-one, comments from the audience. I'll open the floor for anyone in the audience to speak on any matter for three minutes. Seeing none. Ten point oh-two, comments from board members. I'll open the floor here.
And Ms. Redd, I said, when I sort of talked about it up front, when I re-watched the Wellness meeting, it, it came off, I just wanted to clarify, we have AEDs all throughout the school district, working AEDs. We have a potential grant for newer AEDs, but we have AEDs already in the school district.
We do have AEDs in the school district, yes.
And we have people in the school district who know how to administer those AEDs, and we have a team of people who know how to do CPR, and we have an AED plan in place if there's a code that happens to a student or a staff member.
Yes, under the leadership of our nurses currently, we, we are offering CPR tomorrow, actually, and enhancing the teams and supporting the number of individuals. Mrs. Ziducci can speak to that if, if we need more details, but we continue to work towards those little medical response teams that have been proposed, if you will, as part of the wellness conversation, so that we enhance our capabilities to respond to a medical condition.
Is the CPR trained tomorrow, what Dr. Campley was asking about at the Wellness meeting, or is, is that just something different? At the Wellness meeting, they mentioned that there's...
Mrs. Ziducci is saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. And then, we, we often also, maybe it's CPR, maybe it's CPI also on conferences, when we can, when we can actually have our paraprofessional staff available, they will participate in some of these trainings, too. So, again, continue to build capacity in this regard.
So, one of the questions that, I know, Dr. Campley, you... So one of the questions that I know, Dr. Campley, you had, we both shared, so would the training tomorrow put us over that percentage of?
Oh, I see. Um, that I do not know the answer to. Yeah, you can speak. Mrs. Aducci can speak to that. That's a good question. Thank you.
There we go. Okay. Um, so we do have 24 participants tomorrow and that's, uh, specifically to identify and target the 10% threshold that we had to meet specifically for that grant. In addition, we're doing another, probably about 20 to 24 participants on November 25th. And that typically is a time of year where we're combining our CPR and CPI training. Um, the CPR training is specifically to target our individuals who do any type of MA billing so that we can, uh, get reimbursement for our medical assistance students who are receiving one-to-one or paraprofessional supported positions.
Okay. My, I guess my last question is, what will we be doing with the old AED devices?
I cannot answer that, but, uh, we're going to recycle those. Is that what that means, Mr.? Thank you, Chief Miller. And, and I think we thought about putting more, say, in the high school because it's a larger building with a larger population. Um, but we want to recycle those and maybe replay, put some of them in other buildings. Um, and enrollment will drive where we might have the number of extra ones. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone else have a comment or a question? Seeing nothing else around the table, 10.03, notice of video disclaimer, and 10.04 is adjournment. See you next week.